Okay, welcome everybody to the August 17th, 2021 meeting of the Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is Gyrotonic Rheinbeck, 11 West Market Street, special use permit and sign application. You can come up and sit right here. Is this our public hearing? Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Wait, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any member? Any member of the public who would like to speak on this topic? Don't be shy.
If you might explain it.
Okay, there, it's a new studio, a fitness studio, and I believe there's a masseuse or-
Acupuncturist.
Acupuncturist also operating in the business. And there's a new signage, a hanging sign in the window graphics, and the location is in the Village Center Business and Historic District, Overlake Districts, and we have to have a public hearing because of that, a special use permit. Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
A second? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so we have done, we looked at this last time, right? And did we do the calculations? Do you have the paperwork, Ryan?
So, um-
Oh, there it is.
The zoning enforcement officer looked over the application, however, based on what the landlord has assigned to this tenant space, he feels that is the more pertinent allowable signage for, for this application. That the three square feet that's allowed by the landlord is what the board should follow.
And is this, is this three square feet? It is not, you could just-
It's actually, I think it's less, because if they, let's take a look.
The problem with the round signs.
Yeah, see, yeah, and we had this issue the last time. And I think you clarified that it's 19 inches in diameter.
Yeah, when I talked to the sign maker, he said that the 19-inch diameter-
Yes.
-is going to make it go to 2.5. His only question, I didn't know what bothered with it, is that because it's round, it should actually, it's, it's 2.5 or something?
Yeah, yes.
I was like, I don't really care.
Yeah, I think we clarified the last time.
Yeah, I did the calculation, it was 1.3 or something like that.
Well, yeah. I come up with 1.96.
Okay, something like that, yeah.
So, because it's round, and we don't, we don't take a 19-inch square, we take a 19-inch round.
Exactly, so that's his point, was like, well, actually, it would be less if that matters, and I was like, I don't care that much. And that way, when he did the dimensions for the glass, when we were doing that, it came out to just like, less, it came out to 1.48 or something. So it was just under three square feet total.
Including the Mulally acupuncture.
Correct.
So by my calculations, right, by my calculations, clarifying that it's 19-inch diameter, that comes to 1.96 square feet, two feet. The Mulally is 7 inch by 6 and 1/2 inch, so the total is 2.28, just about 2.3 square feet for both the Gyrotronic and the Mulally, right, which is under the three feet.
Is there any signage available should somebody open in the other business that the clothing store was in? Is that, that's-
That's on tonight's, that's Erwin Garden.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's got its own-
Okay.
What should I say?
Tenant space.
Its own tenant space and its own lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I honestly didn't, I don't even know, I didn't even know what was going on.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, the item B 11 West is the Gyrotronics, and it really comes to, between the two signs comes to about 2.5, not 3. 11A is the one that's also on the agenda tonight, the Erwin Garden, and they're asking for 1.745 square feet. If these numbers are correct, they've been allocated too, but we'll, we can get to that. Either do them both now or get it over with.
No, we'll do one at a time, okay? We have to do one at a time. We have to vote, so does anybody have any other questions about Gyrotonic?
It just seems like we should correct before, so the file has the correct numbers in it.
Yeah, so, so that any remaining allocation for any of the others is clearly available. Who, who would do that, Ryan?
Give that to Ryan, he can, he can, they can make the change on the application.
I can work with the zoning officer.
Yeah, and do the, and do the calculations, so we understand that. No other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the special use permit for Gyrotonic at 11 West Market Street?
All motion. One thing, the colors, is it white with black? Is, is that what it's gonna be?
Good, good question, yes. The, the background is white, the lettering is black, that little dot up there, I've done usually in a pewter, like a metallic, like a little, a line, and the, the line in between the two is a matching long metallic pewter. That's what I've done.
So it's basically black and white. Just a warning, you can choose to do what you want. White signs we've found look like, white, white signs look temporary. They don't have, they, they look like they're paper.
Yeah.
And so I would suggest that you do it off-white.
On my sign in Milbrook, we did like a faux whitewashed wood.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And it was a thicker, so it's, to match the Alicia out of the, to kind of stay in line with them, so we would have like a faux whitewashed wood green, is that?
Yeah.
Anything other than like, white looks like a temper, yeah, cream colored, any kind of off-white looks a little better on a sign.
That's fine.
Just a suggestion.
Faux whitewashed. Well, I would be, I'd like to keep it cohesive with the other space, only if people are going to both, sometimes they do. So yeah, if a, if a faux wood green, like a whitewash is up, because that's fine, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Just write it on the, on the form.
And this is a window application, it's not a sign. So this is on the door?
Yep.
Okay.
Just the door lock.
Okay.
And that's sort of orange, that's-
Yeah.
So where were we? I'm sorry to interrupt. I was asking for a motion.
Jeff's motion.
Yes. Oh, Jeff made the motion.
A second motion.
Spend seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you. You're done, thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to do anything?
Yes, when everything is tiny, and everything is up, and the mist rub, and the sign is up, it's 70, 80 minutes, I'll, I'll put it up.
Second item on the agenda is Lydia and Mike's Labor 25 Mulberry Street.
Hi.
Again. Oh, I don't have a third chair. Vote, bring up a chair. All right.
I'll be socially disturbed.
All right.
You all know our address, right?
Pretty sure you do.
I don't.
You look over.
I'm still sound.
Oh, yes, we haven't, we haven't met Mark, we haven't met Skiar.
So I don't know if you want to give it, or if you see something. Jeff, I love when you're going through your whole, yeah, great, so you got one paper? So that's, whoever, whoever sees it, I know. Yeah.
Which document would you like to review first?
That's a little up to you all. Do you want to talk about the site plan first, or do you want to talk about some of your concerns with the company?
Well, the item on the agenda is a positive or negative recommendation for two variances.
That's great.
So, so we don't need to, we, we need to look at the design, but we need to understand the variances, and you said there was a problem with the pool, the septic, whether the garage could be there, we haven't seen what you've revised.
Right, so Jeff is pulling up the site plan that was submitted to, that Mark submitted to the Department of Health. So this site plan shows, uh-
Oh, well, we might have to- The network in Village Hall is not the greatest, but you're plugged right in.
Yeah, here we are.
You're not even on the, you know, you're not even on the network.
I think, I think it thought I was trying to connect to the internet.
So, oh, okay. So who's supposed to?
So-
So Mark is here to basically explain all of the like, for the health stuff. So what you can see is, oh my God, Mark.
Oh, we have, we have-
You can do that too.
We had, we had the distance from the pool was your problem, and Mark was working on, and we had the main and the reserved septic field, and then did it bump into the garage shed area?
Right.
That was, we were looking for an answer. Okay, that's a nice point, though.
Look, on this, on this plan, I inadvertently shut off, set, like, how I calculated the setbacks out from the garage, from the shed, so those are actually shown here. So it's, along the north boundary, it's a, from this garage to the property line is five feet. This corner is 5.4. In the rear, it's five feet to the easternly boundary, and then on the shed, it's also five feet to the easternly boundary, and it's a little more than 15 feet to the southerly boundary. So this plan, there's, there's two sheets to the plan. I had extensive conversation with the Health Department on how to develop wastewater disposal for the site. So the, you know, starting with the existing residents, the existing septic system, it's just a tank located, right here, there's a portcocher, it runs out here, and then there was a tank, and a secret strip located here. What this proposal does is it now, obviously, water, existing water service to the Village Hall and Mulberry Street. So what the, a discussion with the Health Department, ultimately, how we develop this proposal is utilizing same outlet for the residents, although, you know, it's still, with the additions, I guess we can get to that later, having, having a septic tank for the residents. And this is gravity feed into a pump station here, the same thing from the garage, there will be a septic tank associated with the garage, gravity feed into a pump station, and then from the pump station, I was able to find two areas on the site that were available for disposal of wastewater. Those are driven deep, and so the soils, you know, historically in the Village are worth any of the needs. The testing proved that in this particular area, there's, there's another sheet, my other sheet associated with it shows the location of the test holes for both, you know, looking at the soils and circulation tests. So the agreement with the Health Department was to be able to provide, and so then there's a, the second sheet also has separation distances from, the Health Department has certain separation distance requirements from the garage slab to the, so this is, this would be the primary exorchid, this is the secondary, once again, Health Department, the cars are designed to only go one. And so, primary, secondary, and meeting all the, meeting requirements for separation to the building. In this case, just because of the, you know, the physical constraints of the property and the lot size, need a waiver from Health Department for setback off of the property line, typically it's 10 feet, we give, uh, above seven and a half feet separation to the, to the southerly boundary line. And one of the requirements for approval by the Health Department, a requirement for separation from the existing pool is 35 feet. So you can see that the primary system is separated 35 feet from the pool. Part of the approval is managed upon contingent to if the expansion area ever needs to be constructed, the pool needs to be approved. And so that, that's actually, so that was the agreement we had in the field, and that was David Burson of the Health Department. And so these plans have been into the Health Department for a little more than a month, so we're expecting some type of, you know, initial review and response soon, next week with the Health Department. And so it was, it was, you know, certainly a constrained law for wastewater disposal with this, and with, you know, with the help of the, of the Health Department and, you know, working through some of the issues that I feel we're going to be able to get again approval from for the improvements, well, for the, obviously, the existing residents, which I should note, it's been, it's currently an existing four-bedroom residence, and it's now going to become a three-bedroom residence. So that certainly helps. And then in doing the design, having these accessory structures, there's no, there's no additional wastewater flow that's generating on the site, it's just, you know, the residents.
So the main questions are, tonight's topic is recommendations that the zoning board of appeals for the variances. So the question that we have to ask is, why does it have to be five feet from the back? Does the Board of Health require that proposed shed and proposed garage to be there and not five feet forward?
They do. That is, so meeting all minimum separation requirements by the Health Department.
So there's, yeah, so to the east urban boundary, that you can see that like, the septic field is kind of pushing with a leg to the east, so that's why there's a five-foot variance there. The five-foot variance to the north also places that, but there's also an aspect of we wanted to be a territory to the south of the proposed shed as like a, you know, compost, brush, and we want to just frankly, just want a little bit of space on that side because the part that's to the north is right up against a bunch of trees.
That's smaller than what you originally proposed.
Yeah.
We're gonna chop out some of what you're gonna do there. And then the five-foot on-
So the five-foot for the portcocher, basically that allows the driveway to be straight. And so if there's a car that's coming down the driveway through the portcocher, then it can go that way, the portcocher, and then, and the northern edge of the portcocher, the northern edge of the garage, or lack of it. In addition, obviously, to the fact that the portcocher sort of decides, well, it works from all the, you know, as much space as possible. We were trying to make the portcocher frankly, unobtrusive, and so by, we didn't want to have like, columns right in the middle of the vision.
But we just gave a positive recommendation last time for a five-foot variance for a garage to line it up with the driveway. We did that last month.
Yeah.
So I guess we could look at the rest of the plans, but I don't know if we have to tonight unless you want to see what changes were made.
And there weren't really, yeah, the only, we haven't really changed the physical plans, yeah, on the same thing.
So we, we can't act on the site plan until the zoning board of appeals approves, right now this is an illegal plan.
Right.
Until the zoning board of appeals approves it next month, we can't take an action on it anyway. And after, everyone's seen the plans, right? I mean, have you gotten a copy of the plans from-
I did, yes.
And if nothing's changed on the plans, then, you know, we can look at it more seriously after, well, it won't be for a while, right? Because it has to be the third week of September is the zoning board of appeals, and then October 1st, or whatever that day is, would be the site plan approval. Okay, people have questions about the variances, the two variances?
Not about the variances, but just out of curiosity, the, the Duchess County Board of Health, you said that they're moving it from four bedroom to three bedroom, there was no waste anticipated from the garage, but it says there's a bathroom in the garage. How could there be no-
No additional flow, no additional wastewater flow because the number of residents-
Okay, so you went four to three, and that would have been the fourth.
Well, it's not a, this isn't residents, all there is-
The Board of Health does the calculation based on bedrooms, not bathrooms.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So if you have a five-bedroom house-
Yes.
-with one bathroom, they count two people, that's 10 people, and you need capacity of 10 people at that one bathroom. So that's the way the Board of Health does it. You could have, you know, five, five bedrooms and five bathrooms, they require the same size septic system, because those two people would use the same amount of water, and their own private bathroom is they would use, it's the way it works.
So I should have explained that. So the design flow is based on number of bedrooms, and it's around 10 gallons a bedroom, that's a standard flow rationale that's used by the Health Department. So here, with this total wastewater flow, 30 gallons.
Okay, there, there's just one other question, since the topic is setback variance discussion. What we don't see on that site plan is the existence of the portcocher.
Which, no.
So this, so it sounds to me like the, what's being, this whole thing is five feet because we have five foot or five and a half, and then you're assuming that the portcocher here would not exceed five-foot setback?
Right, yeah. That is, that was right. So we're gonna have the conversation about this growing in a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should put it on the site plan, though.
Yeah, I will do that.
So, any questions on the board?
No.
I think it's relatively typical in the village to have five-foot setbacks on accessory buildings and carriage houses, and unless the neighbors show up at a public meeting and, and object, I don't see any reason why not to give a positive recommendation.
There'll be a public hearing in October.
Yes.
So the residents have a chance to come to it.
So I, I'll make a motion to, to issue a positive recommendation on the side and rear yard setback variances.
With the reasons that, so the rear yard, the Board of Health requires that those buildings be that size and further, you know, back from the septic system. And the side yard, well, we just did one a month ago, that we would feel like five feet for a garage is-
Actually, the side yard is also a requirement of the Health Department, because when you look at the southwest corner of the garage, that distance to the markings, or the concrete or something, tends to, and that's, that's where we want a lot of setback.
Oh, okay. Those are two, two reasons. Okay, that's good. We got that on tape hopefully, and-
Okay, did we have to second it?
We have to second. We have a second?
You made the, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, see you next month. Finally got these play items.
Oh my God.
Good, forever you were never gonna, this guy's hard to get a hold of. He's a busy guy.
He's getting hard to handle.
In demand.
It's a dance.
In demand.
Thank you all, very, very-
See you guys welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, the next two agenda items have been postponed. Elizabeth Petropolis, 30 Livingston Street is not ready to proceed with the 10 by 20 pool, they'll be coming back in September. Michael Cassano had a scheduling conflict and is going to come back in September, but this is the second time they postponed. If we don't hear from them in September, well, they have to refer this to the zoning enforcement officer. Okay? So new business, Joust, which is at Sunflower Market, it's the same juice bar, but you're changing the sign.
I, yes, it's the same, same space.
It's gonna be different.
Different chefs.
Different chefs, okay.
Different chefs, different name.
Joust.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the exact same size as the existing sign?
Exactly the same, we're, we, yeah, we didn't want to change the mountain, just mountain and everything else.
So, do we have a picture of the sign?
We do, we do, and, and I can share an updated version of what you have as a mock-up.
Joust, the exact same size as the existing sign?
Yes.
And no lighting, right?
I would just make two suggests, so, again, so that we have for the record what's out there. Nothing was really filled in on the signage here. Okay, it's, and I believe it's, it's two by three feet, 24 by 36 inches.
Signage available six feet, proposed sign two by three, six feet.
Okay, right here. Okay.
They left a building frontage divided by two.
And the, I don't know if we always ask for this, the item number 14, if you're not the owner, it attaches state, signed by the owner, you're specifying who to call, but it's not really our responsibility to call, so how do we, do we go through a process?
We're supposed to have a letter from, from, I guess, MESH, saying it's all right for these people to come and make a, you know, request to change the sign.
The board can make that a condition of approval if the landlord supplies a-
Well, it's not a new sign, it's just changing the exact same sign that was already approved.
Yeah, yeah. We, we have authorization from Sunflower.
Well, it's from the owner.
Yeah.
Not Sunflower. Right. So Ryan will ask for that, but it, I don't think, we're, we're not creating a new sign, or doing any calculations on it. I think it's okay.
I think it's okay to do it with a condition.
Yeah.
But, but we would need that off, signed authorization before you could get the final permit.
All right, so we'll speak to Ryan about that. Do we have a motion to approve Joust Juice Bar and Cafe at the Sunflower Market?
All motion, with the condition we get the owner's approval?
Second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The only thing we ask you is that when it's done, take a picture of it and email it to Ryan so it can go in the file.
Sure.
Okay?
And that is our responsibility to-
Yeah, get him to send a letter to Ryan saying it's okay for, for them to, you know, so we can have that.
And then we have to return?
No. We approved it, we made just a condition. Okay? Thank you. Next, next item on the agenda is Starry Bird Kids formerly sampling. This again is the, a swapping of an existing sign. Are they here?
Mr. Chair, I think we're gonna have to skip over some items. It seems that Mr. Biker from Timely Signs is either not here, or I don't know where-
Well, he's doing the same thing with, changes clothing for men.
He is representing, I believe, four applications.
Yes, he is.
As a segment of Timely Signs, so I don't know if he's forgot or mixed up his days, I don't know, there was no email- know. There was no email or phone message from him prior to the certain meeting. So we can do a little hopscotch here and jump over.
Maybe he'll show up, and if not--
Do you see if he'll show up?
We're gonna have to get a letter, but--
If not, then--
The question Jeff pointed out at the beginning is that Berkshire Hathaway will consume all the signage available for that building, and there seems to be an illegal sign on Calico, some new kind of business, if this thing is up.
Sure.
Halcyon All Day Cafe, Ryan Beck, New York. Would you please contact Victoria?
Yep, I will contact Victoria and Justin to make him aware that there's illegal signage.
And I was hoping to get to the point that we did the calculation and Jeff double-checked it, and Berkshire Hathaway is gonna consume all of the signage available for that building. If we go ahead and, with Berkshire Hathaway, and not only is that an illegal sign, they can't even have a sign.
Once again, these are items that you're gonna have to bring up to Mr. Biker.
Okay.
He's the agent representing, so--
All right, well, then we'll skip to the next four items, and we'll go on to the last two, and hopefully he will show up. So the next one is Halbrook and Lisa Bear, 178 East Market Street, have opposed new two-story, three-car garage. You were on vacation when we wandered around your house. No, we didn't.
I have hard copies of that--
Yeah, sure.
Sure, thank you.
Have there been any changes since last time? Because I have my version from last time.
Are there changes?
Not really, I apologize, Michael's not here.
Right.
Okay.
Save one for Michael. So, I guess the first thing, once again, like the variances with Lydia's property, we can't go on till we decide the disposition of this garage, which has looked to, I think it looked to most of us, we didn't talk, we're not allowed to speak with each other when we have a site visit, but it looked to me, anyway, this, this garage was part of the original construction of the property.
Yeah.
And so you're asking us to demolish a building which is like 150 or more years old, so we have to, if you wish to proceed to that, it's my opinion, I gotta get opinions from the rest of the board, we might have to have a historic demolition permit request and a public hearing on demolition of the garage, and how other people feel about it.
I didn't make the, unfortunately, I was out of town, so if you could fill me in on what the building historic value might have been or is left?
Well, the building is unsuitable for what they wanna do.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the first premise. Second thing is, it's a building, it hasn't fallen down yet, it's built with one kind of siding on the, on the east side, big board siding, and then newer siding, what do they call that?
Novelty siding.
Novelty siding, thank you. Novelty siding on the other three sides, and some small windows, and, you know, it's not gonna fall over, but it's not structurally sound, you could use it for anything, I wouldn't try to drive a car in there or anything, so it, it, I think we owe it to the public to have a public hearing, I don't know if anyone will come, on the demolition of this, of this garage, because it is a very, very old building.
Yeah.
And we hate losing barns.
Any demolition permit request? No, okay, so that's sort of the first step.
Well, the phone went out, Ryan has them, and then we can schedule a public hearing on September 2nd, 3rd, 4th, whenever it is, and if nobody objects, then we can go ahead and vote on it.
Can I ask a question? Is it just by the fact that it's 150 years old that you want them to do the demolition permit? Because it just looks so--
It's required by law. It's required by law, that if, we've been losing a lot of old barns, because people just knock them down, and we passed the historic district overlay, and any part of historic property, be it an addition or a garage that's demolished, has to have some input from the public, a public hearing, and they have to put reasons, there's reasons on the application why it's financially unsound to try to restore it to be of use what you would need today. There's a whole list on that thing to justify why, it has to be filled out, and Michael can figure that out and fill it out, and then we have the public hearing, and if there's no objections or valid arguments from the public, we can go ahead and make our decision about making the demolition permit. It's, it's difficult, because it's, it's not, you know, it's a, it's a nice old barn, but it doesn't meet a 2021 use, and there's that justification for knocking it down, because it isn't what we wanna do. So we have to talk about that.
So what, what we saw, John, when we, when we did the site visit, was that-- In fact, you can see it in this picture here, there, there are a lot of sistering two-bys, a lot of them in there.
Yeah.
The loft itself is held up by one two-by, and there's a, there's a micro laminated beam that was added there to hold that up. There's a fairly substantial steel cable running diagonally from the lower back to the upper front that's holding it erect.
Square, yeah.
The, the ceiling beams are very widely spaced, unhewn logs, so there's a lot of sagging there, and, and it looked a little scary to be in that building with, with those logs holding up that roof, so, so, with such, see, you can see--
Oh my goodness.
You can see how far--
Yeah.
They're separated. So anyway, that's the, and this is from the upper floor, the lower floor has several of the two-by sisters and the micro laminate, and I don't think you can see the cable in here, but--
So structurally, it would have to be completely sort of--
Uh, yeah.
Rebuilt on the inside in order to maintain the outside.
Well, also, it's a dirt floor, and the sills are questionable.
Is there anything architecturally significant about the building other than its age?
He, Michael said he would try to reuse the old windows, which is what we did with the bird barn--
Yeah.
To recycle the old windows. So I guess it's act, up to the board whether or not we wanna go with the historic demolition permit. I mean, I would, Michael's not here, unfortunately, and, but you've seen the pictures, so I would, I would wanna poll the board and see whether they, they wanna go ahead with the historic district regulations, or whether we feel that the building itself is not something worth saving.
I feel it's not worth saving.
Okay. Warren?
Mr. Chair, I, this is a public hearing, but I would ask a question, particularly this property, is it within the Village of Spark?
Yes.
And assuming it is, I'm just wondering if this building is considered as contributing or non-contributing to Spark?
We looked at all the materials that they have, it is on the 1960, 1979 plan, showing the barn being there. Actually, it shows three, and one of them was demolished when the pool was built. So it shows it there, it doesn't, it doesn't mention it in, individually and say, this is a really critically important, beautiful barn that should be saved forever. Doesn't say that.
Mr. Chair, there's an asterisk that says it's been either altered or changed since whenever--
Right.
The filing of the historic records.
That, the siding on the three sides.
And the garage doors presumably are probably not the way it was originally.
I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah. It used to be a one, one door?
We bought it, there was one.
Okay.
Sure.
So our intent is to break the building back, it's over our line of intent that--
Right.
Our goal is to break the--
Right, Michael eliminated the need for a variance by moving it over to the tent fee from the side you had setback.
And our goal is to utilize a lot of the structures that's inside the beams for the interior as much as possible, and to, what we've laid out is, you know, similar to many structures that you see in the Village, these historical barns, that we might recognize.
Yes.
You know, this one's being built right now. So what we're proposing is to take the structure that's there and make it historically, move it to the Village, and, you know, it, it is slightly dilapidated, so we wouldn't be recreating a dilapidated look.
Right.
But what we're trying to do is create something that we can utilize more than we can now, because it's not completely safe to utilize this, because we actually have over the years, shorted up, shorted up, so just to persuade.
So I'll, I'll ask, Jeff, do you think that we can make this decision, or we have to have a public hearing on a share of demolition?
Well, is it, is it standard protocol because it, because it was on the list of older public hearings?
I think we've never done one, a demolition without a public hearing, I can't remember.
So the board also has the discretion to hold a public hearing, either way, which you decide?
Well, my opinion, we should, we should hold a public hearing, but I think there's a good argument to be made that it's non-functional--
Yes.
As a barn or a garage.
And dangerous, even.
Dangerous, yeah, I, I, I agree, and it would give the public a chance to see for themselves the shape that this is in. There's a lot of rock, there's a lot, some of it's not original. I was gonna recommend, if we got that far here, that there are salvageable beams that can be used, and Michael had suggested that perhaps one or two of the windows could be reused.
We did that at his barn.
But, but I, I agree, it's probably wise to have a public hearing so that we don't hear later on, why did you let them tear that barn down? What were you thinking? Let, let the public see for themselves the shape that this is in, and what it looks like.
We lost a lot of old barns in the Village and the Town, and people are very sensitive to it, and that's, so, so I think we should, there's to be a public hearing for the demolition permit, and she should fill out the demolition permit form. Okay, so Ryan will get that to you.
I just wanna be clear, have to be clear, because there's extra work that you're putting on the applicant for, you know, to meet the criteria for the demolition permit, or are we, are we simply requesting a public hearing to offer a, 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 a chance to comment on this? Really have to be clear about this. Just not only for the board's sake and the public's sake--
So we could have a public hearing--
Yeah.
On the demolition of it without going through the historic demolition permit justification process?
Well, you have to have a permit to demolish a building in the historic district.
We, I, I don't, Ryan, we have to do it. You know, it's, it's, it's in the code.
I'm not disagreeing with the board, it's just a significant amount of--
Fill out that form.
There's more than just the form, Mr. Chair, they have to have beyond what their architect has provided, they have that complete engineering work, 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 or, it's, it's more than just filling out an application.
But a lot of that has already been done in those photographs, and the explanation, the narrative goes along with it.
Yes.
I think so. You know, it doesn't have to be anything more than that, if, if the board is relatively convinced that this building is based on the site visit, not worth saving.
If the board is comfortable with that option to go with what Mr. Bird has already drafted so far, Jeff, is it signed and stamped by him at the very end?
Yeah, yes, yes, I'm good with that.
So we have, we have a, a public hearing, but not go on the demolition of this barn, to let the public know that we think this barn should be demolished? Okay.
I would agree that that is a complex--
We're leaving our minds open until we hear from the public, but our initial inclination based on the site visit is that it, it's worthy of a, a discussion of the permit.
Yeah, so we're not gonna do the whole justification process, but we have to let the public hear that we're going to knock down a 150-year-old barn in the Village, that we're going to approve this. We need to get input from the pe, from the public. Maybe no one will come, no one came to the public hearing we had an hour ago. We have to go through the motion, and let the public have a chance of input, and if there's no input on that, then we'll go ahead with site plan approval on September, whatever day it is.
There's one other thing. Hate to give any, I looked up the flood map, and it appears to me from this map that the barn is in the 100-year floodplain.
Michael Bird said it wasn't, we need to get--
So he's gonna have to justify that to the ZEO, the ZEO is the floodplain administrator for the Village, so he makes the final determination as to what's in or what's out. Based on this map, it looks to me like it's in, at the very least, the ZEO has to rule that it's either out, or that you're in compliance with the floodplain zone, and that means another permit.
So it looks wonderful, the board required us to be 100 feet from the--
100 feet from the kill.
From, from the kill?
Yeah.
This barn's further than that?
It's based on the elevation of where the 100-year floodplain is, and this map has base flood elevations, so between 193 and 192, it appears this building is there, right near the edge of it. Your house, I mean, these maps are not 100% accurate, you know, they're, they're based on aerial photographs. So it depends on what the architect says the base floor elevation of your building would be, and if it's out of that floodplain, you can prove it to the ZEO, who's the floodplain administrator, and he can rule that there's no permit necessary. But I think you have to go through that step, because the initial indications from the floodplain map, for instance, here is the pool in the middle of the floodplain. Now, like I said, it's based on numbered elevations, so your architect should be able to tell you what the first floor elevation is, and if it's over 193 feet, then you're probably in the clear.
193 feet from what?
From sea level.
Yeah, it's not just from the kill, if you, if you were completely flat, 200 feet from the kill, that means if the kill rises up six inches, it's gonna flood your house. So it's not just 100 feet, you have to take, you know, into consideration the elevations, because there's nothing to stop the water.
So you wanna take this?
I just have Michael verify that with, with the ZEO.
And where's the barn?
Well, it's hard to see on this aerial, but there's the pool, and there's the house, and the, and the barn is more or less lined up with the back edge of the house, so I think it's right in here.
So where's the button?
This blue van, van here is the 100-year, that's the 500-year, the yellow, and this is the floodway where actual flowing water goes in the middle of the flood, so you can't build in this area. You can build in this if you're either, the general in, in the floodplain, I looked at it briefly, and the Village is like almost all the rest of them. If it's non-residential, you have to be either above the flood base elevation, or you have to flood-proof the first floor, so that if it rises up, it doesn't inundate the building. If it's a residential building, which I don't think this would be classified as, you have to be two feet above the base elevation. So I think you're close, you may have to raise it up a little bit to make that base elevation, you have to keep your electrical wiring and all that stuff above the base elevation. The ZEO should tell you what you need to do.
Okay.
We talked about this last meeting, I don't know if you're-- We talked about this last meeting, I don't know if you're here or not, I can't remember.
She wasn't here.
And our goal is to reconstruct the barn.
Right. We understand that.
Yeah, it's, you know...
And it's going to be 10 feet from the property line?
We're moving it.
Yes, they moved it over.
Okay.
The plans we had were five feet, so variance is not needed.
Yeah, I mean, from that drawing, it looks like it's... Oh, I see, the red is the previous.
This is the little shed, Joe, which exceeds the setback.
Okay.
But when they build a new one, it will be compliant.
We're on 10 feet, so we avoided the variance.
Well, you know, this is not in the middle of the village, there are no sidewalks out front, people don't walk by and observe this barn. It's just sort of removed from the normal site. We still have to abide by the historic district laws, but I think in terms of design, I think we can be more lenient because this is not something that the general public is going to see much of from the street, a moving vehicle, setback as far as it is.
We need to clarify that, Michael needs to talk to Ryan and get in touch with Ken or Justin and verify the floodplain. And we'll have the public hearing on September, what day is it?
September 7.
September 7. And then if that's all clear, I don't see any reason why we couldn't receive its approval as a plan. We looked at this enough.
Can I ask one more question? So you have a public hearing, that so if a resident says, hey, that barn, it's been there for 150 years, it is significant to this building, and we can't use it, so where do you go from there? Unless they say, no, you know, I'll argue it now.
The public will have a chance to voice their opinion. I expect that there may be varying opinions coming from the public before it will listen and digest the views of everyone that has an opinion, and the board will come to a decision.
Right.
The people you see before you.
And the decision is more based on the code than it is on public sentiment?
Yes.
Although public sentiment may weigh in if, you know, there's good ideas to come out of the public discussion.
I guess I'm just curious, as the landowner and homeowner, if they decide, no, it's too historically relevant to the village?
It's not, they don't make the decision, we do. And we do it based on...
So they don't work with the barn?
They don't make that, you just heard the four of us sort of agree that it's not structurally sound, it's not, you know, worth saving, but it is on the historic register, we have to go through the motions. You know, we've had people that said, why do we need the Mirabu spa? And many people object to that, but it's allowed in the code. And people say, who needs a hotel right around 9? We don't want the hub hotel built, but hotels are permitted in the business district. It doesn't exceed the height limits, it has the parking, it's perfectly legal, and it was approved. So it's not, people get emotional about things, but we go by the code. And the code says that we have to allow public input on a demolition of historic structure, and we have to do that. And if 50 people show up and say, you're going to destroy the village by knocking down that gorgeous barn...
I'm just curious if the process...
I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah.
But we have to let them know and give them the opportunity to make a comment on it.
Understood, understood.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, all I need is a motion to sit and hold a hearing.
Okay, do we have a motion? Is scheduled a public hearing September 7?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, I see Paul is here. Do we want to finish our business and leave Paul? Warren's been waiting patiently for a while.
I'm done, sorry.
Yes.
Perfect.
If you want to go on with the four Pauls, I'll let Warren speak, and then we'll get back to the four Pauls. Why don't we have Warren come up, and then we'll go back to the four signs for Paul? So the next item on the agenda is 6384 Mill Street LLC. Site plan will be converting unoccupied commercial space on the second floor to residential apartments, a one-bedroom, one-bedroom apartment? It looks like there was a one apartment, is that?
Just one apartment.
It's one apartment.
With one bedroom, meaning if like a second space, it could be a bedroom, but the owner's intent is just to be one bedroom.
Okay. It's above the former Calico now, something's going on over there.
Well, exactly, not above Calico, it's above what's next to it, so Bertrand Hathaway, Fazaria Leely, if they're still there, Coach Horns.
The old Cocoon Theater?
Yes, Cocoon Theater, right. So most recently was Maya Amal's, she had like a school or did demonstrations up there? And then it's been empty for a while. That might have happened pre-... It's been empty for at least a year.
So it's not apartment, it's apartment.
Apartment.
Right, so we saw the plans.
Right. We're not moving too many walls, we're basically working with the space. There was a kind of a kitchen in the area that's shown as a kitchen. In the front lower corner, which is shown as bedroom, there's three offices for the previous tenant, there was no bathroom or the shower on that location. The chief advantage of this space for someone interested in a large apartment or a vacant house is an elevator, so it's actually accessible.
That's good.
And it's kind of a nice big loft space. I think that was kind of how the owner saw it, sort of like a cellar loft in right now.
Is there any change in the parking requirements for...
So interestingly, I'm glad you asked, there are. Maya Amal had eight parking spaces assigned to her use there. As an apartment, it only requires one, but I'm assuming two spaces, since there could be two bedrooms or two people sharing a bedroom. But that actually, because this is, Ryan had raised the question, this building is actually in the same ownership as 6376.
Right.
And so the parking summary that was done for 6376 applied to this building too and took into account the spaces both in the former Calico or Coens, and then all the uses in this building.
Behind the hub.
Right, all of this. So in fact, the parking for the two properties together, the requirement has dropped by six spaces. We're not proposing to not pay the fee in lieu of the we agreed to pay for the parking at the other site, but the point is the actual demand for parking has dropped by converting this to a little apartment.
And the parking is in the rear of that lot?
It's in the rear of the lot behind the 6376.
So that's where the residents would park, is back in that back, over by C V S?
Exactly right. So there are no exterior changes proposed to the building, and the windows are all there. First floor unchanged. There are two existing exit stairs that lead directly down. You can see the one on the left is the one that goes down, it comes out sort of next to the former Calico or Coens. And the one on the right comes down into a lobby that leads out to the street. And then, of course, the elevator's in the back. So if you were to go to the elevator, you enter the door under the window in the far right, walk to the back, and there's the elevator that takes you up. There's further, there's a further area in the ground floor beyond the elevator, so there's a roof back there, and that's why on the upper left corner, there's a door that leads out onto that roof. It's technically not an emergency exit because it's not a ladder or stair down, but you do have three ways out in addition to the elevator of this space. So we're doing pretty good with code. I initially thought this building was a particular, it will have to get a sprinkler system to put a residence upstairs because it's a mixed-use business district downstairs.
Wow. I thought it was three stories.
Yeah, but that's the primary change.
So the elevator only serves this apartment, then?
That's correct, one serves, yes, the two floors.
Elegant.
Yes.
That's existing. Why is there an exit door in the back of the walk-in closet in the upper room?
Well, that exit door was there, and I don't know, that must have just been used as a storeroom, it's been there a long time. It's kind of an odd location, somebody just filled in the area to the side of the stair with storage, but in this particular case, turned into an apartment, it serves okay as a walk-in closet. That could be closed off, there's absolutely no need to have back entrance to the walk-in closet, I would presume.
This is on billiard sewer?
It is.
And there's another window here, are you going to close that window?
If there is a window there, it didn't show on the plan, it has been planned that I got from the previous, but I can confirm that. And you know what, that's really going to be up to the code enforcement officer because technically, you're not supposed to have lotline windows, and they would have to be closed if anyone ever chose to build something right next to this, the same height.
Yeah.
But if the option of them remaining here, I see it there.
The double window is in the plan, the one to the right is not in the plan.
That's right. And I certainly had that in mind.
Is that in your bathroom?
That would be in the bathroom.
Hopefully it doesn't run up against the wall.
No, well, you know, the wall had to be ruined a couple feet, because there was a wall there.
Oh, okay.
So I don't think we're moving anything.
Well, I think it's great, I always think apartments in the village center are a good thing, you know, it makes it less dead, you know, weekday nights and that sort of thing.
The elevator makes it accessible, which is great.
Right, there are very few elevators in commercial buildings.
So this is an accessible unit?
It is.
There's also, Warren submitted a secret short form. Do we need to go over that now?
We have to do a neg deck.
Correct.
I didn't hear what you said, you have to do what?
It doesn't affect the environment, it's a short form.
Okay.
Doesn't affect the environment in any way.
You should be less people using the building and everything.
Right. It's on sewer, so we don't have to worry about bedrooms and bathrooms and all that calculations that are going into the sewer system.
Yeah, I think the impacts are going to be less, obviously.
Yes.
Than a commercial space up there. So in terms of water use and parking and every impact that you can imagine, there'll be less.
Really, compared to the cocoon here, I mean, there are a lot of people trying to be closer.
Was the elevator put in for Cocoon?
I think it might have been there earlier, to be honest with you, because remember it was the old phone company building and the big equipment up there?
I didn't know there was an elevator back there.
It might have been added at some point.
Yeah, because I thought the Cocoon had to rely on stairs, which I always thought was a little weird.
Yes.
So do we need any public hearing or any, we need to do a neg deck? Nope, there's no circulation on it, right? Nobody needs to be noticed? So we could act tonight if we wanted to.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason why not to go forward with it. I can't imagine there's any major objections to something that's entirely on the interior.
Plus, provides more apartments for people to live who aren't going to build. Try a block or something.
Although it's probably, certainly not an affordable unit.
Maybe it'll be a night, weekend.
So we have to, a motion for a neg deck?
What is the neg deck?
A negative declaration that doesn't affect the environment.
For the seeker.
No significant impacts on the environment. And that's what that short form is supposed to, if there's any, yeses to jump out at you, that's a reason to not give it a negative declaration, or at least think about it.
Any questions, let them know, please ask.
Like, just when you use abbreviations, it's going to take me a little time to get up to speed on that.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move the negative declaration.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we need a motion for a site plan approval for 6384 Mill Street for a one-bedroom apartment on the second floor.
Yeah, I think of this as being a two-bedroom, just because he calls it an office, it's a legitimate-sized room with a bed, with a closet.
It is, although there is no sort of bathroom with a shower accessible to that room, like to the other bedroom, so it would be for a very brief guest, I assume, not for...
Yeah, well, there's a hallway bathroom, I guess.
Right.
So anyway, it doesn't matter, he's comfortable with the parking, which would be the only impact. So I'll make a motion to approve this site plan.
Do you have a second?
Just one question, we usually have dimensioned site plans, is the fact that it's scaled acceptable? Quarter inch to one foot?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll say.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you for your time, I'm sure I didn't mean to cut into the science.
We have more to talk about that building with Paul. Come on up.
Want to see one?
Haven't seen one while, he was sending underlings or not coming at all.
Underlings?
Underlings, other people have come from Tyler's signs. Last time somebody came.
You can take them, I can take this off.
You can take them, it's suffocating.
Pretty far apart, six feet. Which one do you...
Starry Bird Kids, formerly Sapling. This is relatively straightforward.
Yeah, it is pretty straightforward. It got a little complicated because we're changing the types of signs, but all the square footage has been adhered to throughout the whole thing. It'll show, like, the first part of this presentation is essentially showing what is going to be removed in the square footage for that. And then we go through, we did take all of those saplings off of the lower part of the window on the second page.
Trying to make a quantum leap in high-tech planning board meetings in one night.
That's okay. I mean, I really like the Zoom meetings, not that I don't love to see you guys in person, you know, I could be cooking with the laptop, watching the proceedings, and say, oh, wait a minute, let me put my fork down, it's time to talk about science.
It's nice and cool, it's quiet, nobody needs to wear pants. But, you know, it...
Yeah, so as we go through this...
Not possible.
Yeah, it's pretty much, we're taking down the dimensional ladders on the front. I know Carrie Lee has had to change this business a couple, name it a couple of times, I don't know why, but I mean, we're just helping her to get through this.
So same ownership?
Same ownership, same merchandise and everything, literally just a change. You know, when you Google Sapling, I think that there are many businesses out there with that name, and I can only think that someone has a really overzealous attorney going and trying to shut down people's businesses that have the name.
I don't think you have any Starry Bird Kids anywhere.
That, you know, that's pretty unique, I don't think she's going to have a problem for a little while. And then the next slide over, we just, yeah, right there, we took, that's already been done, we took all of those off of the window to get another three square feet. And then the next slide over, she really wanted to do, yeah, so this is the, because of the complexity of it, we're doing a wall sign above the awning instead of the dimensional ladders, which is a little bit more cost-effective and can capture some of the detail of the logo on the top.
Nothing on the doors or windows?
Yeah, the thing is, the text on the top stays. That square footage, that 15 by 29, is three square feet that we took from the lower sapling that, it all nets out, but it gets her new name on there in the two vehicles that she wanted, really, which was the sign on the building.
Yeah, you had all of those together, it's three square.
Just the plants on the bottom get removed?
Yeah, the text on the top stays.
But the top remains.
Right.
And all the calculations look good to me, except for, I think the window lettering actually takes up less space than you accounted for.
I usually go a little higher on the calculations because, you know, I don't want to exceed it.
All right, so do we have any other questions?
Can I see the Starry Bird sign again? We say this to everybody who has a white background, we probably said it to you half a dozen times, but it's our impression that white background signs look temporary, if they're white, white.
It's not white.
Okay.
It matches the Navajo white of the fascia.
All right, good. So some sort of off-white, doesn't look like paper?
No, it's going to, we've done some painting there, we've done all the signs there, it's actually a Cabot solid color stain called Navajo White, which we have a color match to, so we're going to spray it to match the fascia. It will probably match the fascia, you know, the building itself needs some painting, to be honest with you, but it will definitely help me with it.
Okay.
Nor will the hanging sign.
Good. Good.
All right, so I'll make the motion to approve Starry Bird Kids signs sixty-four twenty-two Montgomery Street, Suite One. Do we have a second?
I have a second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have them get a picture to Ryan when the signs are hung?
Ryan, how many have been sending you position photos? So, um-
Changes, next to Gigi's. That's been there forever.
It has been there forever, and I was surprised when Scott told me that the owner was interested in having a building somewhere. He said, well, we can do that, but you're gonna have to take all the window lettering down, which, which we have done. This is another kind of exchange, physical sign, replacing the square footage.
Be a twin of a Gigi's sign on the brick.
Yeah, essentially it's gonna mirror that. I mean, Gigi's is about the same square footage, but hers is oval and his is rectangular. Now, you're gonna see the first part of this is all the calculations and the square footage, if you go through it. We can go page by page. We go to the first one, we've got a six-square-foot, sorry.
I believe this should be sixteen inches, not thirty?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right?
You're right.
Sixteen by six, sixty-five. This is the correct, and you can see, this is obviously not thirty. It would be as wide as the whole door.
Yeah, you know, I think that that's probably, the designer that worked on that probably got my notation for the door width.
Right.
As from a scale, I apologize for that. Is the math correct though? I think it is.
Yes.
Six by six, six point sixty-five times sixteen point seven three.
Okay, yeah. With all, all combined, you're, you're saying it's, max allowed is fourteen. I'm coming up with thirteen and a half total for all of the requests.
Yeah, Piper said that they have fourteen square feet. And, you know, this building predates my arrival in Rydick, so I have to take your word for it. Now, what you're seeing, and we put, we're not dealing with the lights right now. I'm not in charge of the lights. But what I'm showing you is that if Scott and the owner decide to do lighting, it's going to exactly match what Gigi has, because that's the building standard for that building. See the li, the two, the double, the double farmhouse lights, the doosneck lights? He hasn't decided, or I haven't been informed of that, but I'm just telling you that if they do lighting, it will be exactly the same as Gigi's, because they're right next to each other. Does that make sense? So we're now gonna have a discussion about the color temperature or the wattage. I'm putting the fixtures on there in case Piper says my tenant wants to do lighting. That's where it's gonna apply. It's just gonna match the same as Gigi's.
Okay.
So that's why there's no lighting information on this. I'm not sure that he wants to do it. It's really at his discretion.
All right, you can just indicate there that it's the same as-
Yeah.
The pre-existing on Gigi's.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, video tape here. Section nine, item number nine.
Okay. So there's no wall sign up there now?
No.
I walked by there today, and there's a lot of commotion in front of that store with the tables and the benches and everything, the landscaping. So I can see where he might want a higher sign that isn't blocked by all the activity in front of his business.
And the trees are tall, too. But I mean, you know, I don't, he's been doing okay without them the whole time.
It's a long-term business.
They shouldn't have another sign.
As I am, yes.
So you're not deducting any signs, you're just adding it?
No, no, we are. Like, if you look at, all he has right now is just large logos on the glass, so that counts toward the square footage.
Right.
So we're, that all has to go.
Oh, so he's taking off all the windows?
Yeah, all the window lettering has to go in order for him to have enough square footage to do it.
Okay.
We do have door logos on the side entry door and the front entry door that fit within that square footage.
Okay.
And here, none of them, it's all, it's all listed there.
Yeah, here, here John is the statement. Item number three.
Okay, yeah.
All window and door graphics will be removed.
Yeah, the total's fourteen, and we come in about thirteen and a half.
Any other questions?
Yes. Thirteen point four six.
It's good to have a mathematician on the board here, dude.
I don't do my own taxes, let's say that. It's not that good, the calculator.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve?
Some of.
The changes, sixty-four twenty-two Montgomery Street, Suite Number Two, changes clothing for men. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that includes the potential lighting and fixtures to match the ones at Gigi's?
Yeah, that's in the-
If the applicant wants it.
Yeah, I'll just let Piper know that, you know, the minutes will reflect that.
Right.
Light fixture, if desired, must match.
It's usually light fixtures.
And it must be tilted towards the sign rather than towards the street?
They use the emblem fixtures that naturally are offset toward the building.
Yeah, they're not the type that you can swivel.
Can we, I don't know what's on the agenda next.
There's, there's Berkshire Hathaway.
Can we do Irwin Gardens first?
All right, we have math questions about both of them.
Okay.
We could do Irwin Gardens.
I think the Irwin Gardens seems less complicated. This is not my project, but it's, at least it seems straightforward to me. Maybe, I mean, other.
Now, we just did gyrotonic. So is this sign available, ten square feet? Building frontage twenty, ten square feet, but gyrotonic is in this building?
Yes.
There should be a letter from the landlord.
But do we have to go back and look at gyrotonic?
Um, we can.
You can't, you can't do ten square feet. It says ten square feet's available.
How much are we using?
Did they only count the, count the frontage of eleven?
Gyrotonic has twenty-three feet, four inches. Isn't it in the, in the same building, the gyrotonic? This is, this is the one that, that clothing store poked a hole through and made it into one giant store. Isn't that in the same building?
I think it's divided according to the Irwin Gardens owner. It's divided now, and they are at the very end, and they are continuing to use. It's gonna be re, re, they make their own presses as well.
But is our, is gyrotonic and Irwin Gardens in the same building?
They're in the same building, however, I think what needs to be looked at by the board is, and the board override what the landlord is, has given to each tenant.
Yeah.
Well, he's given twenty-three feet, four inches to one, and ten feet to the other.
Gyrotonic is B, eleven west. Irwin Gardens is C, eleven A west. That's that little tiny add-on that's to the left.
Yeah, so that's included in here. They can have two square feet according to that, right?
Yes, according to this, I don't know where these numbers came from, but I guess the, they're saying the building, divide forty-six feet, frontage divided by two gives a total of twenty-three, four. And they're saying, you know, we only know right now about B and C, eleven west and eleven A west.
But Jeff, if you bring up Irwin Gardens-
This is wrong.
Yeah.
Something's very wrong.
Yeah, because they're not, why are, this is not-
This is the gyrotonic.
They're placing not for this out there?
This says forty-six and twenty-three, this says twenty and ten. That's the same building, how is forty-six and twenty-three go with twenty and ten?
Yeah, but if you go back to that form with the Irwin Garwin Gardens.
Yeah, Irwin Gardens is-
They're only asking for two, right?
So according to the landlord- But it's, but they're showing more than two on the applicant, on this sign, this signage, they're showing more than two.
Oh, is it?
For some reason, our designer is only counting the words Irwin Gardens and not the eight-inch by twenty-four-inch panel that is hanging on. That's completely wrong.
I, I think actually it's correct. The thing is, whoever filled this out just assumed that the little eleven A add-on was twenty feet wide, therefore they get ten, ten, which is not.
Uh, it's not twenty feet.
It's irrelevant, because it has to be-
It's a tiny store.
What the full building owner dedicated to that dress, eleven A, and it wasn't ten feet. But however-
They're only asking for two square feet.
They're still under two feet. There, with, with these two, the twenty-inch by eight and the thirty-by-three-
Yeah, but what does the sign look like?
Let's have a look.
The sign is not two feet.
Well, twelve by twenty-four would be two, twelve by twenty-four is two feet. Yeah, this is actually correct.
Yes, yeah, it's-
It is correct.
It's good.
And then we only have a small amount of lettering on the glass. It does, you know, this is correct. It's just the, the sign, the way the sign permit is filled out is misleading. Shouldn't have ten feet.
Right, it's no, it should not.
When we talk about BHHS after this, you'll understand, like, this is kind of related to the same issue.
Right.
The allotment of, of the frontage of the building is not being divided. They're just dividing it by the number of tenants. Depending on whether the person's building is, you know, fifty feet or one is five feet, they're all getting the same amount of square footage. It doesn't work out very well.
So that explains the error here.
Do you want, the signage is, let's say the signage is under two feet, and you don't have any issues with the signage. Can we go back, can I go back and correct that and resubmit it with the, just two square feet?
Yes.
Yes.
Or does it matter? I mean, do you just-
Just one question on the calculations.
You have the form there in the file, right? Yeah, I mean, you can cross it off right now.
That's this.
Two square feet's available. Signage available, two feet.
Yeah, just take, if you just scratch out the ten and put two.
Yeah, and then scratch out the building frontage because that's-
That's bad.
Yeah. But a question.
One, two.
You're showing, you're showing a twenty by eight and a thirty by three. Now, if we go down to the signs here.
Yep.
There's the thirty by three. This one is not twenty by eight, it's twenty-four by eight. It's probably still gonna be, because using the twenty by eight comes to one point seven four five total.
Yeah, so that's, I don't think this is, I don't think this is science correct.
Yeah, it should, so in other words, if this is correct, that says twenty-four by eight, then when we go back to the upper part here, then another change that needs to be made is that this should say twenty-four by eight, not twenty by eight.
And it still adds up to one point three three?
Uh, before the twenty-four, it added up to one point seven four five.
So it's still under the two feet.
Yeah, but then you, you still have five eighths of a square foot for the window. To add to that, so that's, it's over two.
It's over two. So you may have to make a twenty inches, twenty and a half.
Much better than my calculator.
I know. You even did the area of a circle last time. Who remembers from high school math that calculate the area of a circle? I never need to do that.
Well, from a, from a static standpoint, the board has no issue.
Okay, wait a minute. I see where that's from here. This should say twenty-four. Because twenty-four by eight does add up to one point three three. I have a note to myself that twenty by eight adds up to one-
Does Ryan have the original?
Adds up to one point one two.
We need to make the changes on the original.
The area is good.
Just change it on the original, the twenty-four by eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, the drawings then are correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-four by eight does equal one point three three.
No, the drawing has twenty.
No, the drawing has twenty-four.
Yeah, the drawing does have twenty. No, it's twenty, it's twenty point five is the, I don't know why they put that on there, they pulled out. The twenty point five is the center-to-center measurement of the existing bracket, which we tend to use. And so that's critical for our fabrication staff, but-
But not, not relevant to us.
This is done by a relatively new designer that needs some corrective training, which will happen tomorrow morning.
Okay.
It's fine. And then I don't, I don't know, I don't recognize the handwriting of who filled, who filled out the permit application. Might have been the, might have been the client. I'm not sure. I'll talk to the project manager.
All right.
We'll get it squared away. I'd like to, I mean, as long as it's two square feet, we can meet that requirement, and I can submit clean paperwork for you that is, has all the correct stuff typed in, so you don't have to read it.
All right, do we have a motion to approve Irwin Gardens eleven West Parker Street, Suite A?
With the corrections?
With the corrections.
With the corrections.
That will be submitted to-
Within a twenty-four hour period.
To, to Ryan, so he has a clean sheet.
I apologize, that worked.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. I'll second.
You go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What kind of a business is Irwin Gardens?
I have no idea.
They could sell flowers, they could be a real estate broker.
It could be, yeah. It could make design photographs.
You would never know it from the sign.
No.
Okay, Berkshire Hathaway. Now we have, we have, I have a headache already. We have to, we have to do the math on this one.
That was just a warm-up.
Because we really had problems, and then with the illegal new Calico store, there would be no space for a sign on that building if they go with the Berkshire Hathaway calculations.
Right, and, and this is, I talked to Steve about this, or at least we had an email exchange. He's not pushing for it. He said if he can get it, he'd be appreciative of it, but what it does, if you're gonna do it at the expense, does everybody understand where, what, what's going on with this location?
You could explain it.
Sure, I'll pop on it for you, okay? A lot of the signage at this location was done, wasn't done by us. In fact, none of it was done by us. I believe the property has changed hands from its original owner at least once, maybe twice, since these signs were up, perhaps. I don't have any records of any of these tenants or working on them, but suffice it to say, this is a multi-tenant facility. There are four, three storefronts, and then the tack-on of your, if you're standing in the building, it's on the side, the Cali, it's a former Calico space. It's really like an annexed building. That is part of the square footage of this property. That's part of the address, six three four. Okay. So that's like a tacked-on building, very small frontage on the street. There are three suites that have storefronts that would be, if you're looking at the building from left to right, it's Berkshire Hathaway, it's Cesarean Lily, and then it's, it's vacant now, it's Coach Farm, it's Farmer's Collective or something, yeah.
Took a photo today.
Right.
Right, Coach is gone.
Yeah.
Doctor Tom's is gone.
We're gonna talk about this sign, which appeared mysteriously on the hotel.
We, we didn't do it.
No, no.
No.
No, no.
It just showed up.
Ryan's going to contact the zoning enforcement and go out there and find out what's going on over there, and, and Victoria.
Yeah.
That appeared. There's a business operating without any-
Well, there was a bracket, so they just put the sign up.
They just hung a sign.
So, but what's happened is, you have a fixed amount of square footage now, or a fixed amount of linear square footage, that should be equitably divided. You also have some, some interior tenants behind those storefronts, Doctor Tom's, and there's a host, at least a dozen other smaller tenants, medical or health-related behind there. Doctor Tom has a sign as large as the storefronts, but that's the entrance to the first floor, like, it's like an inside wall.
Not gonna notice.
And when you go inside there, there's, there's signage inside that tells you where all the tenants are. But for some reason, that tenant has been given as much presence and as much square footage as any of the other storefronts, although it's not storefront. And the linear frontages, that is about a third, or less, maybe a quarter. So, you know, there, there's some logistical challenges in asking all these people to take this down and reapportion it. I've never been contacted, I don't even know who the landlord is. Berkshire Hathaway is a client, he's asked me to get, he said, why don't I have lettering on my building? I said, I don't know. Let's find out. But, you know, Ryan, rightly so, said, why don't you go and take a measurement of all the signs, figure out what the square footage is, and see how it lays out. All of that we did. It's just, the, the other thing you realize is, you still have to have, Calico has to have some signage, okay? That's included in the frontage, but there's nothing there, so I didn't measure it. There's also an awning for what appears to be the second floor walk-up, and maybe some tenants there. There's awning on that, which adds signage on it, but it seems to be painted over.
That's gonna be the plot.
Okay, that's gonna be the area.
That's gonna be a- That's going to be the apartment, right?
Right.
Okay, so that's not going to need any signage. Okay. But still, you're, you have 42.51 out of 44. If that doesn't need it, but what if that, that place is not, that's going to become residential, so there's no potential for that to need.
Calico, whatever that hap.
Yep.
How, that, that other food store that's in there now, unbeknownst to us, opened up business, that's going to need some signs whenever we make them come in.
Right.
So there's only a foot and a half of it.
Yeah, a foot and a half left. So Steve needs six, and they need something. I mean, let's be honest, Steve has been very clear. He said, I'm not going to push that hard. Um, you know, he's been doing fine without it. He was just asking. He didn't want to go into a lot of paperwork or variance. But since we're here, I just thought I'd explain what the situation is. There's, I have no mechanism to remedy this or fix it. Um, I think it's unreasonable to request that the people who've been in there for ages take their signs down and make them smaller or smaller than the signs. Um, I think the only thing you can probably do is ask the landlord to say, look, you need to kind of template this out to see what the actual square footage is based on the frontage. And as tenants move out, you're not, that signage that they have is not grandfathered in. You're not going to be able to take those 24 by 36 signs or 24 by 30 signs and just put a new shingle up in the same size. You're going to have to communicate with the client.
Ryan has to contact Victoria about the new Calico, which we don't know about. And then he could point that and give her, give her, Paul's, appreciate you with the calculations. Give her Paul's calculations. They have a problem here. So what do you want to do with Berkshire Hathaway?
Well, Steve is just fine with getting approved for the replacement of the existing hanging sign and saying, well, if I can't get it, I can't get it. Um, what I do know is that we size those letters to fit within the actual, what I consider the frontage of his parcel, which is the center line of each brick pillar on either side of his windows, is 12 square feet, I believe, think. Um, this has been so long. I did these drawings like two and a half years ago. And, um, let me just, let me just take a look.
So is the sign he has now, this is the proposed sign?
That is, this is the proposed sign, which is slightly smaller. He has a sign that's the same size as the other ones. We've made it smaller to give us a little extra.
It's in the bottom, the existing.
Yeah.
Where it is.
Yeah, that one's smaller, so.
So it's a little bit.
Um, but the, the application says the existing sign is 30 by 34, and the proposed sign will be 30 by 34.
Yeah, um, it isn't. It, that drawing was done to just show a direct swap, but it, it, it's the same size. Regardless, what Steve wants to do is, he wants to bring the older sign with that tan bottom, which they don't use anymore, it's all purple. He wants the new sign. It is slightly smaller, but even if it was the same size and we don't do the lettering on the top of the soffit, um, it's not going to, it's really not going to make any difference. It doesn't sell any fewer or more houses by adding lettering up there. Um, he's a reasonable guy. Uh, but it just did bring to light that there is a situation there that is inequitable for him. Um, but, you know, I, I don't know how, he, he'll probably be in there for quite some time, you know? But the other businesses, you, you, what you may want to do is the Coach Farm, Go Cheese Place, number one, I will admit, we made that sign, okay? However, they just came in and said, we need a sign. They never told us where it was going. They never told, they just told us the size. If you go under that sign and it's not 84 inches across the sidewalk, I mean, I can hit my head on it and do 63. So, I know that it's going to go away because it's vacant, but because they have a vacancy there and you're going to deal with Calico, you might want to talk to the landlord and say, hey, at this point, you know, your, your long-term tenant, Steve, came to get lettering on his building. There's not enough square footage left for him. Um, you might want to come up with a plan, a long-term plan. You don't have to force your tenants to take their signs down, but if, when they vacate, the, the new tenant should come into the compliance. And the way they should do it is simply take the 20 feet and say, okay, so they're decided, this is 12 feet of square feet, this is 12 linear feet, this is 15 linear feet, and do it that way. So at least each storefront is proportioned in signage that it has, instead of just saying, just give everybody.
Except for the fact that they have rear tenants too.
Yeah, they have rear tenants. And I, you know, I don't, like I said, I don't know who's in there. I've never worked on the building. I don't know the landlord. Um, I used to go in the hallway because the restaurants were in there when Grand Crew was there, but, and I knew that there were a lot of businesses in there.
There's, there's a lot of business in there, and it should not, not Berkshire Hathaway, but should Victoria choose, it'd be a good justification for a variance that this kind of structure needs a little more signage because there's too many businesses and not enough.
Right.
But that, that's up to her and not up to Victoria.
It's not up to me either. But the other thing is, when you have an entrance at street level that has multiple tenants in it, you're far better off doing a wall sign with tenant panels than having, let's say, your largest tenant within that space take all of the square footage for their one destination. So that entry door, to the right of that entry door, you could have a tenant listing with Dr. Tom's at the top, maybe his is, you know, a quarter of it, but then you have the tenants listed below. So everyone has some presence street-side. You get rid of that square footage in the wall sign, okay? Maybe you put the address number up there or the address range if it is broken down into different addresses. It doesn't seem like it is because it's all 6384, suite 123AB, whatever it is. Um, and then these three tenants would divide that, but you'd also have, the, the Calico is such a narrow space that the sign should be designed just for that footprint. And then, like you're saying, if that becomes residential apartments, all you're going to have is, um, like mailbox or 911 numbers on the wall or something like that, and take the awning down, or keep the awning up.
So what do you want to do with, you want to approve the purple sign?
I'd like to get the hanging sign approved. The window lettering isn't changing. It's, uh, everything complies with the, with the square footage. It's less than what they're allowed, but I can't get what he wants. But I can't just put Berkshire Hathaway or Hudson Valley Properties up there because the corporate entity wants that entire length of text exactly as it's placed. They won't allow them to have it. They don't do it like that, he doesn't get it. So our hands are tied on that. Um, he's okay with it. He just wants the sign to not look, you know, not be falling apart, which.
It is.
Okay.
So just say, we're denying the, um, the, uh, building or wall-mounted sign lettering, um, until a later date, until, um, the landlord can, you know, put variance together, whatever, but we approve the swap-out of the new sign.
That, that's this one you mean, though, when you pulled in one?
The purple one.
No, no, no. This, this does not exist currently.
No. No, we're, that's, we were trying to get, um.
Yeah.
We were trying to get that, uh, that approved, but it, the problem is, is it doesn't, after measuring the building and the existing signage, it puts, it's, it's all out of whack. You know, we can't be responsible for taking all the signage away from Calico. I mean, that would be, that would be unacceptable to do that.
We discussed at the beginning, Jeff, we talked about that earlier, is there, there's nothing left.
There is nothing left.
There's nothing left if you go ahead with this.
Yeah.
So I, I think this really falls upon the landlord to work, to work this out. And I appreciate you doing the calculations. We give it to Victoria, let them figure out. And as I said, it would be a good justification if they choose to, to go to, uh, come to us or record as a ZDA and say, this is a really strange property. It's got a lot of little stores, and we need, we can't have everybody with a one-foot-square sign. We need a better way of doing this, as Paul pointed out, especially for the one, it's a mini mall.
It would make sense to me.
It would make sense.
To, to get, allocate the frontage to the people who are in front and get a variance for a directory sign, projecting sign near the back window that would have all the tenants in the back.
Yeah, because all of the tenants, except for Dr. Tom's, are, they're not represented at all street-side.
Yeah, exactly.
That's right.
Then you can kind of see them through the door if you're looking. But I think it would be.
It should be.
You know? But you can come up with a plan and execute it over time, you know, as, as conditions change.
Yeah, when new coach comes in. I think Dr. Tom is gone. Is he still there?
I think we did a variance for the courtyard over here based on that safe.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because they have frontage buildings and then they have rear, and they got a, uh, variance for the directory sign for the rear tenants.
Yeah, I mean, as, as places change hands and people vacate and move in, they can just adopt the code. It's a lot easier for a tenant to see what they have during the leasing process and kind of figure out that they don't have enough square footage to operate the business after they've, you know, leased the space or signed the lease. So it would benefit the, it would benefit the landlord in terms of just having an only-ones approach to it, and also equitable for all the tenants. Like, if I was in a building that wanted, you know, maybe some rationale between who gets the signs and who doesn't, I would, I was here first and I took everything, so I'll figure it out.
Right, so we'll, we'll, we'll.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve just the new hanging sign, not the facial lettering above the door and canopy, um, for 6384 Mill Street. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. And, uh, Ryan will talk to Victoria, and she can, uh, I could talk to her too if you want. And I think it certainly is justification for, this is just at the little mall on the edge of, of, like we do right next to it, uh, in the alleyway.
I mean, the interest in that is if, if Calico did put up that sign, and let's say that's the, the square footage that they need, by doing this calculation, you might find that that would work?
Right now, we have to send the zoning enforcement.
Yeah, no, I'm.
And he's going to call Victoria and say, we got this thing. What is this thing? And it's got signs, lunch, well, dinner, you know, and it's got even more than that. It's got the hanging sign, it's got a thing there, it's got lunch, it's got an enormous amount of signage. They just painted signs.
I don't know.
I know. There wasn't.
Thank, thank you for your patience. We'll collect that, um, Erwin Garden thing.
Okay. Figure out what that is. All right, I think we've covered.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Everything. We don't have the minutes yet.
Thank you.
Engineer's letter for, right, you should know that we, um, 155 East Market Street, um, where they're converting the doctor's office into a residence. Um, I spoke with Aaron Pethic, the engineer, and the Board of Health, uh, what, what was his name again? David Pearson. He called me and I spoke with him, and, uh, they're not making any internal changes to the building. It's, it's going to be a, a four-bedroom, uh, which the septic system that Aaron Pethic has designed is adequate for that. And he said they are totally backed up because of COVID. They're two, three months delayed. And he sent me an email, uh, that he says it's not a problem that the public, the Board of Health will be approving the septic system that the engineer designed for this property. And he doesn't see any reason why they can't begin construction. They can't have a C of O until he gives them the Board of Health certificate. But it takes a couple of months. It's going to take them a couple of months to do renovation. We didn't want to hold them up. So, um, we made an executive decision between Ken and David Pearson and myself and Ryan to say, okay, we'll let you go ahead. We approved it. Just go ahead and construct it, knowing you, you know, until Ken approves, uh, the whole thing and we get the Board of Health certification for him, you can't move in. And so we, you know, we're trying to be flexible and be nice to people.
Single-family homes, we usually don't get involved, except that it was in the historic district, but it was a non-contributing building within the historic district.
Right, so, again, because it's, it's based on four bedrooms. I think they have like two and a half baths or something. It doesn't matter. Every, you could have a powder room and every bedroom could have a bathroom. It's still the same number of two people per bedroom. How much can they flush, you know? So it's the same calculation of the septic system. Anybody have any other comments?
I wanted to bring up.
Somebody there.
Go ahead.
Sure. You were sitting there for a long time. I didn't know why you, I thought you came to make comments on some of the public hearings.
Can you hear when you're in the back like that? Oh, because I can barely hear up here with that thing.
Oh, we're projecting that way. It's coming up. No, that comes out of the loudspeakers. These do not. Right?
Well, they all do, but the volume is down pretty low.
Oh.
Now that I sat through the meeting, I'm not sure I'm really correct, but just to state what I'm hearing, maybe you can give us some advice to me. Um, I spoke with Martina Clinton on May 11, and it was about a matter of giving a crush on Prospect Street here in Village. And she told me that Prospect Street was under litigation to determine whether or not the entire strip of the road was public and fortunately, but maybe private. So I'm trying to find out what the status is of litigation for that.
This would be, this is the correct board. Uh, you would want to try to get in touch with the mayor and the board of trustees.
Okay.
Um, so when you call Village Hall again, um, there's sort of a, uh, system that you go through. Uh, there should be a selection to contact the mayor, uh, choose that system, and just leave him the message.
7015, which is the clerk's number. You call it and it says type one for this, two for this, three for this, one. I think one is the mayor. Leave a message for the mayor, say who you are, and you have this question today. And he'll call you back and let you know where they are.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was building or planning or.
No, that's the village. That's the mayor in the village. But you had a good education.
Oh, this is interesting, actually. Everyone's talking in particular about the signs that they saw and how they can add or stay.
Well, we don't want, you know, billboards and neon signs in the historic district, so, you know, you know? And if you look, if you walk down Market Street, you will see many different shapes and colors of signs, but yet they all line up going down the street and, and they look nice. And, uh, so.
What, what is your name for the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Marie Trombini.
Marie Trombini. Welcome, Marie. It's nice to see you.
Thank you. Appreciate your advice. Thank you, Ryan.
Glad you had an entertaining evening.
Anybody else? Anything?
I, I meant to bring up when Warren was here. And I didn't really, I don't know how far we can push this, but if, if you go to the sidewalk in front of that building, it's a real trip hazard. What they've done is they put a new sidewalk in, but they left about, um, about a two or three-inch edge to it. It goes down to a gravel that goes out to the curb.
It, it falls off going to the street, yeah.
And there's a sharp break at the edge of the sidewalk, in which anybody could turn their ankle.
You mean the curb, or it's not the curb?
It's between the curb and the sidewalk. It is a depressed area. So at the edge of the sidewalk, there's like an edge this far. So anybody walking down there, there are sidewalks in the dark or whatever, could hit that edge and.
Pull out into the street.
Yeah, fall into the road or.
In, in front of the old, um, phone building?
Yes.
Yeah, or if there's a lot of.
And half of it is this sort of exposed edge to the curb and nothing, and then the rest.
The sidewalk comes out in the air, and here's the curb, and it's like, you know.
Yeah. Especially if there's a lot of pedestrians. Busy weekend, and people are trying to get out of each other's way on the sidewalk.
That's exactly how I noticed it. I was walking down the sidewalk and I tried to get distance, and I stepped off that curb, and I went, oh my goodness.
What, what would some solutions be?
Well, um, you know, either the village could, it is actually, it's actually state road property.
Oh.
Uh, so you're not going to get the state to fix it. Normally, the, the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk and the, and the safety of the frontage of a building. So I would, when you're talking to the sign, about the sign issues, also bring up the frontage issues between the curb and the sidewalk really needs to be redone. And it can't be, shouldn't be done in asphalt, which is what the, half the building over by Calico is like broken-down asphalt. And then the part in front of the Yo' Chice shop is this barren area, which is gravel, which is like two or three inches down from the sidewalk. So my feeling, and I've talked about this in the past, a lot of people have been throwing gravel into these, you know.
They have.
Stones, round stones, which I think are, again, are not the right edge to a village sidewalk. It should be landscaped. And so I would suggest that he take out the asphalt, fill that in with dirt, and put in a ground cover. Not grass, but, you know, something like myrtle or something that would fill in the space that people could step out of their car onto and not kill the plant, um, so that it survives.
It's the passenger side. You get out.
Or to fill it in with like brick or some other decorative, um, walkable surface. But it does go down. It's, you know, it would be hard. But it does go down, it's, you know, it would be hard to have a brick there because
The coast stand.
You know, it would be an edge that people would sort of fall off on.
Herbivorous favorites, John?
Well, that's the thing, it, because it's, it goes down from the height of the sidewalk to the height of the curb, I don't think you can put in any sort of walkable surface because it would be level and people would turn their ankles as well. So my feeling is it, the best solution would be soil and a ground cover that is durable enough to take people stepping out as they get out of their cars.
A low, so that after it rains and people are stepping out the passenger side, they're not
Yeah, the mud hall.
Ankle-deep and wet.
Yeah, or, or wearing out the grass because it gets stepped on so much.
It's almost an Olympic high jump to get out of the passenger seat and get up onto this curb, which is like, it's up from the street.
Some solutions should be, you know, for this area in particular, because of the slope going down, it's a particular dangerous area. Whereas in other places where they put in, you know, river stone, at least it's level, so you could actually walk on that if you have to walk around somebody on the sidewalk or something.
Who would initiate that conversation with the building owner? Would it be the zoning officer?
Yeah, I, I would think that it's an unsafe condition.
I would, I would put that on the list for Kent, go look at that sidewalk and see what he thinks of it. I mean, he can come up with a solution for it, we can recommend it to Victoria. It's a dangerous spot, I've known it for a long time, I noticed that.
It's getting worse, it's gotten worse.
It's gotten worse. I think tree, trees might be lifting, I don't know, honey locusts, these don't seem to push things up much.
Yeah, is this Bender's building?
Yeah.
So he should be responsible for coming up with a solution for the frontage of his building, that's my feeling, because the state is never going to do it. And it's the state, it's not even the village right away, it's the state right away.
Any other questions?
That would be a good neighbor. That would be a good citizen effort with the building owner.
Yeah, and he's, you know, he, he's putting money into the village, that's something he could do to really make things. And he's going to get a lawsuit sooner or later if somebody falls off that edge. So it's really an insurance issue and nobody else. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is driveways in the village. I've noticed as I'm walking around, new houses that are going in, the driveways are getting wider and wider. Like Connie Bathrick's new house over on, what is it, Chestnut, has like a twenty-some-foot driveway. And driveways are supposed to be limited to eighteen feet. And I would like to see, and, and the sidewalks should continue across the driveway, it shouldn't, you know, so, for instance, that, that little house across from Connie Bathrick's that was just redone, it's like a little ranch house and they completely redid it. They paved the driveway and it's like twenty-some feet wide, and it goes right across the sidewalk with asphalt.
Every, every one of my neighbors down Mulberry Street is driveway, 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 about five in a row. Just asphalt straight across the street.
So when they approve, when the building department approves a new house or a new driveway or a renovation like Connie Bathrick's or whatever, we should just be careful that the driveways are no longer, no wider than eighteen feet and the sidewalks continue across it, rather than being interrupted.
Is that in the code, John?
What's that?
Is that in the code?
The eighteen feet is.
Eighteen feet max? So why wouldn't they have had to request a variance to make a twenty-foot wide?
Well, I, I think it's, you know, single-family homes don't come to us usually, or, you know.
Okay, but, but I guess then the CEO should do the diligence to say, "You can't have a twenty-foot."
But, you know, like we, we approved Connie Bathrick's.
Yeah.
And I don't remember whether we approved a twenty-two-foot sidewalk, driveway or not.
It's a two-car garage she built, so she, I could see her saying, "Give me a little more space to get in and out of there."
Yeah, but like the, the driveway right next door starts out as a one-lane driveway and then widens out to a two-lane wide, you know, fifty feet in.
Right, you're not going to pull two cars in and out at the same time.
Exactly, so I think it's just something we have to be aware of, because the, we are approving things in the historic district. And we just have to be really careful about driveways, because the more I walk around, the more the driveways seem to me are, you know, one of the most unsightly part of the village, is that everybody does, you know.
Asphalt straight across.
Well, that's, that's a, it's a good point, so.
When they come to us for a site plan.
For the continuity of the sidewalk issue
Yeah.
Should be something that the committee that's looking for updating the zoning codes should definitely put in there, it sounds like to me.
When anyone comes to us, we
So that we have a code that's enforceable on the continuity of sidewalks.
Yeah, we do that when we look at site plans.
When they come to us. But if they don't come to us, then it's not clear, but yes, it should be in there.
Right, because if they don't come to, if they don't have to come to us, but they need to get a building permit. A building permit should honor the code, and if, and if it gets added to the code, then that, that's dealt with.
No asphalt over the sidewalk, right.
And no asphalt sidewalks anyway, you know, like the building eleven West Market has all asphalt.
Throws the Beakman arms.
Yes.
Throws the Beakman arms, and that should be, I don't think the village ever changed that. They, they allow asphalt sidewalks. Even though it was not recommended in the sidewalk.
Though it's concrete or a boost on, asphalt might still.
Yeah, the old Cipperly Barn across the street from you on South Street's all asphalt, from the building to the street.
Yeah.
It's very ugly looking.
We don't want, yeah, we want, we have the brink of a
So at any rate, I thought I'd bring that up so that we're careful when we do site plan, to really look at driveways.
We always do, it's just that if there's a one family and we're not, not in the historic district, they just do it.
Yeah. But even like that house that was renovated across from Connie Bathrick's house on Chestnut Street, I don't, we didn't see that because it was probably just a renovation. They just fixed it up. But after they fixed it up, they put in this big wide sidewalk right across, and big wide driveway, asphalt all the way to the curb. And it, you know, they spent a lot of money, did a good job on the house, and then they turned the front yard into a Black Lake, you know. So anyway, it's something I wanted to bring up while I was thinking of it.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? We've had two very long meetings.
Yeah, just one question on that though, because it's very interesting. So they don't come to us, those examples you gave, didn't come to us because they weren't required, they weren't in the historic district?
They're both in the historic district, one was a renovation, so it doesn't come up with this. If you're just fixing a house up and you're not adding to it or anything. Connie Bathrick across the street had to come to us because she was changing the configuration.
But, but the one that was doing a renovation put in that driveway, it was just, with breaking the continuity, not only was it wider, but it broke the continuity of the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't remember what was there to begin with, so it may have been just
That's the issue when you're dealing with existing driveways. They don't know, and they don't come to us to ask. They don't come to the village to ask, they just hire the paving guy.
And pay it straight out.
The paving guy has no idea, and the paving guy just does his job.
Wouldn't they require a building permit though?
No.
A permit to put in a new driveway?
It's not technically a new drive, driveway, because it's an existing curb, but it's an existing driveway. They're just resurfacing.
But sometimes I think they also widen it.
I think, yes, on the apron, they do widen it to allow for better snow removal, so they can push more out for the village to push. It's just when they widen the apron, sometimes it hurts them in the end because our plows catch it, catch the apron.
Anyway, something I brought, I thought we should at least be aware of, when we do things, to be really careful about driveways because it makes a huge impact on the street-side view.
All right, everybody enjoyed the rest of your summer.
We need a motion to adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see you all September seventh.
I know, that, that is a Jewish holiday, it's, it's a Jewish New Year.
I should know that.
You should know that.
I know, I should go to the rabbi.
I probably won't come to that. Is that okay?
Yeah.
You can operate as long as you have four people or just three people?